The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is February 25, 2020. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone in front? No, we don't. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Four Don Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Lise Udebe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard O'Brien.
Here.
Changes to the agenda. For clarification of the LRA Item 5.2 and the record, it will be the Local Redevelopment Authority Board that will consider and vote on the item when we get to it. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare that conflict now. Saying none? Public comments? At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Good evening. How is everybody? My name is Vicki Holt, and I'm the Branch Manager at the Riverbank Library, and we have a lot going on at the library this coming month. We continue a storytime on Mondays at 10:30 and bilingual storytimes on Tuesdays at 10:30. They both continue until the end of March. The Mayor Book Club is on March 9th at 11:00 AM, right after my storytime. Our annual Dr. Seuss Birthday Party is next week on March 3rd at 3:30. There will be two crafts, games, and a birthday cake. Come celebrate Dr. Seuss with us. Once a month, we get together for a knitting club. The next meeting is on Thursday, March 5th at 3:00 PM. Those who are new to knitting and want to learn the basic stitches can come to learn, but also experienced knitters can bring their projects and work on them and share their knowledge. This program is open to teens and adults. There's a master garden class coming to the library for container vegetable gardening, and it's on Saturday, March 7th at 2:00 PM. It's going to be taught by Heidi Oftermeyer. Please call the library at 869-700-8 to sign up because space is limited. Our next art lab, we're doing a papier-mache bird sculpture on March 17th at 3:30. Expect to have fun and get messy. We have a new teen health and wellness program led by one of our local teens, Avni Parmar. This month, or March, she'll be leading a discussion on art therapy, and that's on March 20th at 3:00 PM, on the same day as the teen book club. The teen book club is at 3:30, and they're going to be reading Girls Made of Snow and Glass by Melissa Basher-Doust. Light refreshments are provided by the Friends of the Riverbank Library. The book club for grownups is reading Thousand Pieces of Gold by Ruth Ann Lum McCun. Nobody has easy names. The discussion for this book is on March 24th at 4:00 PM. And we have a game and craft program on Thursday, March 26th at 3:30. Giant-sized games. We have Jenga, crossboard, checkers, tic-tac-toe, and dominoes. So those will be available for families to play with, and then we also will set up a table full of craft supplies so the kids can make whatever they want. And then lastly, we have Great Valley Museum coming to the library. They're going to teach a program on dinosaurs and prehistoric life. So that's on the very last day of March, March 31st at 3:30, and they've had programs at the library before. They're very fun and very educational and free. So make sure and take advantage of that. And it's not too late to get your taxes done at the library. Every Wednesday in March, Rida Tax Volunteers will be there to help people with their taxes from 4:00 to 7:30. Please call the library to get on the list. All our programs at the library are free to the public, and it's because of our Eighth of Ascent dedicated sales tax that these library services are available. So please come by to the library and visit us and enjoy what we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki.
All right.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Chad Homme, and I live here in Riverbank. I actually wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but decided to get up and just make a couple of comments. At the December 10th meeting, I was actually appointed to be the Fire District Representative for the City of Riverbank, and I just wanted to give you all a quick overview of kind of what's been taking place over the last couple of months. Right when I came on board over at Stanislaus Consolidated, we were also going through divvying up the different subcommittees that everybody, each board member serves on two subcommittees, several serve on three. And I take place on the At-Hawk Committee as well as a Crossroads West Subcommittee, which I know will be an item that's near and dear to all of you. I just wanted to offer to everybody here that over the past couple of months, I've met with the mayor, the vice mayor, several of the council members, the city manager, and I just want to be sure that everybody knows, you know, feel free to contact me at any time. I'm happy to meet with you, meet for coffee, discussion, give me a call, shoot me an email, whatever you would like. I do appreciate the support that the City of Riverbank is giving, and I just wanted to assure that the city and the city council that the, you know, the top priorities continue to be service to the citizens of Stanislaus Consolidated, as well as the financial status of the district, which I know is two big items that the City of Riverbank was concerned about, as well as services to Crossroads West. So I just wanted to get up and give a quick overview of that and just tell you what had been going on there. So once again, anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call, email, whatever. I'm available in local, so happy to meet with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Saying none, we move forward to the consent calendar consisting of three A wave readings. Item 3B, approval of February 11th, 2020, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Is there anyone wishing approval, or anyone from the public have a comment on the consent items? Saying none, we bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council Authority Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Udebe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Public here in item five. Item 5.1, Resolution Approving the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Mid-Year Budget Amendments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Marcelo Garcia, is going to take you through a pretty minor mid-year budget adjustment. There's really just a couple of changes we're making and some assumptions that are changing.
So good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2019-20. I'm going to go over a little bit of where we were when we first adopted this budget back in June, where we currently are now, and what we're anticipating for the future since we have already kicked off the preparation of the fiscal year 2021 budget. So where we were in June when we first presented this budget to you, we were looking at a ending reserve at the end of June 2020 of 27%, and we were looking at an ongoing structural deficit, which does not include all of the capital improvement projects that you approved of $107,000. And so mid-year, why are we here? It provides an opportunity for all of the departments to review their budgets to see if their programs are as successful as they thought they were going to be in terms of revenue, if any expenditures came up that were unanticipated between now and the end of the fiscal year as well. It also gives us an opportunity to review any new information that has come through from the state of California or the county. As a reminder, the county releases their property tax figures in August, so obviously that's after we have prepared our budget, so that gives us an opportunity to make any amendments at that point in time. And so our general fund, some of the major changes that we're anticipating, as I mentioned, property tax with the property tax figures that came up, I did have to amend down our property tax in lieu of VLF. This is a revenue source that comes directly from the state of California. They make that calculation every single fiscal year and provide us that estimate in December, and so this amendment is a result of that projection that they have made. And so unfortunately, I did overestimate based on some of the figures that we received from the county. This property tax revenue also grows and recedes along with the property tax values, and so there was a slight difference between my calculations and theirs, and so we are revising that downward. Vehicle code fines, it looks like there's been a significant decrease between last fiscal year and this fiscal year, so I am recommending a decrease there as well. Measure L salary reimbursement, anytime any staff members work directly on a Measure L funded project, we are able to recoup a portion of their salaries, and so we did not account for those in the budget projections at the beginning of the year, and so we're going to go ahead and include that amendment upwards. And then transfer-ins of management fees, this is the transfer-in from other funds that offsets what we consider our administrative fees. So for example, all of the finance department salaries are budgeted in the general fund, yet we know that there are finance department members that work in sewer and in water as well, and so those funds reimburse. And so this reimbursement is a allocation that we make based on salary and based on those, the different areas that they work in. So overall, we're looking at a net adjustment of almost $40,000 increase to the general fund. So we have surpassed the $10 million mark in revenues here at the City of Riverbank. Expenditures. So these are some of the major expenditures that we are recommending. The entire list is included in the staff report, but these are just the major ones that we are looking at. The first is the conversion of a part-time position in finance to a full-time position. I'll go over that in just a little bit to give you more detail on what SB 998 entails so that you understand why we're requesting this change. Code compliance. Every year, the general fund subsidizes our neighborhood improvement program. They collect revenues through abandoned vehicle abatement, fines that they've issued on homeowners for liens placed on their properties. This year, we did not take into consideration the significant amount of funds we would collect through the fireworks citations, and so that has helped to offset their revenue. Therefore, the general fund does not need to subsidize them for the $10,000 that we collected over and above what we anticipated. Stormwater administration. So we're looking at some repairs that needed to be made to some of our stormwater pumps that are outside of any landscape and lighting district or storm drain district that we have set. And so the only funding source we have for that currently would be the general fund. So when a storm pump goes down, unfortunately, the general fund needs to allocate funds in order to make sure that we're able to get those back up and running, especially if we're anticipating a wet season. Parks, we're looking to replace an aging vehicle. Currently, we don't have a vehicle replacement program, and so as these vehicles break down, unfortunately, we are having to replace them as soon as we can so that staff is able to get around. And so in terms of general fund expenditures, we are looking at a difference from the adopted budget to the recommended budget of $128,000, or about $10.6 million in total expenses for the general fund. And so the major expense requests, so the first being the conversion of the part-time position to the full-time position. SB 998 was adopted by the state legislature last year, and the, all cities or water purveyors are supposed to have this in place by February 1st, so we're just a tad bit behind, but we will have the policy to you in March for review and adoption. So what it does, it's the Water Shut-Off Protection Act, and basically, it allows a resident who meets certain criteria to have a little bit of extra time to be able to set up a payment plan and for their water bill, especially if it's delinquent. It also provides for an expanded amount of time for all residents from when we will be able to shut them off. Currently, our process is about a 45-day process for them to receive the bill. Then they receive a delinquent notice 30 days after. Then we give them about another 15 days in order to come in and make payment before we turn off. Now, we're going to be required to give them at least a minimum of 60 days. That's going to require a lot more oversight on our part to make sure that we're complying with all of the deadlines. There are some additional noticing that has to be done. There has to be noticing to the homeowner, to the tenant. The notices have to actually be placed on their doors. The notices have to be in multiple languages, so we want to make sure that we are allocating enough staff to be able to handle not only the additional noticing, but also tracking of all of the payment plans that may be coming in the future. And as I mentioned, the policy that we will be recommending is going to be in front of council in March. The second is the vehicle replacement. As I mentioned, there's currently no funding for replacing vehicles. In the past, we had CMAC funds that we were able to take advantage of, and we would purchase CNG vehicles with those. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that anymore. We're not able to use those CMAC funds to purchase vehicles. Forty-three of the city's 47 vehicles that we have now are over seven years in age, and they get quite a lot of use because they're using those vehicles all day long. In addition, CNG requires a lot more funding because you have to basically take a standard gasoline diesel vehicle and transform that into CNG, and so that adds probably another $10,000, $10,000 to $15,000 just to retrofit it, and then you have all of the ongoing maintenance that you have. And typically, once a CNG tank goes out, that's pretty much it. There's not, you're not going to want to put a whole lot of money into that to get that and bring that back up to standard. In addition, you have new fuel emission standards that you have to meet, and a lot of times, the Air Quality Control Board will just tell you flat out that you can no longer use that vehicle. And so where are we now? So we started off with the projected 27% at the end of the fiscal year with the increase in revenues. We're looking at a 28% ending reserve. As a reminder, during the fiscal year, we did change that minimum reserve requirement that the city council was comfortable with from 10 to now a range of 13% to 15%. So obviously, being at 28%, we're well over and above that, and so the max required reserve that's calculated there is at the maximum 15%. That leaves us with an ongoing structural surplus, excuse me, deficit of $186,000. So some of the other funds that we're looking at adjustments for, you're going to notice this equipment lease for the dump truck. Unfortunately, as I mentioned, the Air Quality Control Board can dictate to you when certain emission standards change that you can no longer use a vehicle. Our dump trunk is one of those. We're no longer able to use it, and so all of the funds, water, sewer, streets, are recommending changes in order to be able to currently lease a dump truck until we're able to have a funding source to be able to purchase one that everybody can share. Gas tax fund, we did receive some revised estimates from the state of California for the revenues that we will be receiving for our SB 1. That goes directly towards street projects, so we'll be receiving an additional $80,000 in projects. As you recall, every year, Kathleen brings to you a project list of how those funds will be used. So in an upcoming council meeting, she will do that in order to make sure that we're in compliance with all of the SB 1 regulations. We're also asking for additional funds for our street striping and street signs. We do a replacement program of aging street signs, and then also go through, and we do new street striping in areas where it's getting faded. Vehicle fuel, we're having some increase in costs in vehicle fuel, so we're allocating additional funds for that. Our vehicle tow fund, we're looking at allocating funds for the purchase of a motorcycle that will be replacing a motorcycle that's currently in use. Our vehicle tow fund, when a vehicle is towed, there's a fee paid of $150. Fifty of those 150 actually go towards this tow fund, and the tow fund is for traffic-related expenses, and so it has built up enough of a reserve to be able to replace that vehicle or replace the motorcycle. So that is what we're recommending at this point in time. Recreation, we're actually moving funds around from one fund to another, so we are asking for us to be able to shift $5,000 in savings in the parks account over to recreation account to fund a really exciting new program, which is called the Junior Giants, and so we'll, Recreation will be releasing information on that program shortly. Workers' Comp Fund, and then I'm also going to bring up our General Liability Fund. We belong to a risk management consortium, so basically, we are self-insured when it comes to liability and workers' comp. Every year, they set the fee that we pay on an annual basis, and then they go back and adjust based on the experiences that we had during those fiscal years. So we had a couple of very good fiscal years in the past where we had very low claims, and so we receive rebates from them for that. So we're accounting for that revenue, since they let us know that that rebate is going to come to us soon. And then all of our system development fee funds are being adjusted for the revenue that we're receiving through new building permits that are being issued. And so that, those are the major changes that we're requesting for this mid-year budget adjustment. Where we're going in the future, as I mentioned, we currently are now in the process of preparing the fiscal year 2021 budget for presentation to the city council in May. What we would like to do is go back to our budget workshop forum that we used to have so that you have an opportunity to see the entire budget prior to it being brought forward for adoption, just in case there's any recommended changes. It gives you an opportunity to review it so that we make sure that we're in compliance with our strategic plan as well. So what are we looking at? Property values and sales tax continues to grow. We do have still differing opinions, and honestly, I think I've had that statement up on this mid-year budget and our annual budget for the past five or six years. You still have economists that say the recession is coming based on their indicators, where everybody else is seeing nothing but positive movement. Council should be having a discussion regarding how to plan for this next recession. I know some of the discussions we've had in the past are surrounding our unfunded liabilities with CalPERS and how we may be able to fund those in the future, not only if a recession occurs or not, and so that is a discussion that we would like to have with council at an upcoming meeting. And then there is the current analysis that the city manager and I are undertaking with regards to the options that were presented to you during the spatial analysis. So we're also looking at filling staffing vacancies within the Police Services Department through the use of our public benefit fee. We're also looking at a renegotiation of that sheriff's contract as well. I believe they're also undergoing labor contract negotiations on their end, and obviously, that will also increase any potential cost to the cities through the contract. We have increasing cost and personnel benefits, and then the city itself will begin negotiations starting next January. And then the continued increase in stormwater expenses, particularly in those older sections of town where we don't have a stormwater district set up. We do still have continued interest for new development, and general fund subsidies are still required for both the recreation and possibly our gas tax fund next year for operations, not for construction or any new projects, but possibly for operations due to increasing cost in fuel and as well as utilities. And then at some point in time, we will need to have a discussion regarding future water and sewer rate studies. Our rate study was adopted with rate increases through July of 2019, and so moving forward, we want to make sure that we're continuing to capture enough base revenue in order to cover our fixed costs. Currently, we're not Currently, we're not able to do that in our water fund. Our sewer fund has been a little bit more successful in doing that, and so, we will need to revisit those rate studies to make sure that not only are we collecting enough to meet our fixed costs, but be able to perform those projects that we had anticipated performing. And so, with that, my recommendation is that council review, and if agreeable, adopt the recommended amendments that are being presented to you. This was a labor of love from all of the departments, so, you know, we hope that you will take them into consideration, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions? I have a lot. Go ahead.
On the vehicle that you're replacing, is it like a gas? Why do you have to have it retrofitted?
Well, we currently have a lot of CNGs, and actually, when discussions with our public works department and our city mechanic, it's cheaper if we go back to gasoline instead of CNGs, so we are recommending gasoline vehicles.
Okay, I was going to say.
At some point in time, we will need to have a very broad discussion with council regarding whether they desire to continue to move forward with that CNG station as it is. And I don't mean the building itself, I mean the fueling station, because we will most likely need to make some upgrades to it, and some of the estimates we've been giving is, you know, well over $1 million, and so, that's.
$1,000 seems like a lot for one vehicle.
It is. Well, this is not just a regular truck, it's actually fitted for our parks and building tech, so he carries a lot of equipment with him to all of the different buildings.
Good, thank you.
And just to add one little other component that we're running into with compressed natural gas is the maintenance and major, Maricela kind of alluded to it in her presentation, but when you have a major mechanical problem, you have to go find a specialist that can work on CNG because it's a, it's a compressed bomb essentially in the back of your unit. And so, it's not like anybody will take that work. We've actually had some trouble finding mechanics that were willing to work on them. So, that's a conversation for another day, but it's something we need to get on top of sooner rather than later.
Has the city ever done a vehicle replacement program?
So, we haven't. That's actually a discussion the public works director and I have been having these past couple of months, as we've noted, how many of our aging vehicles are really in need of replacement. There are a few programs out there for smaller agencies like us to be able to start those. They do take a little bit of upfront cost, but after that, the cost is pretty minimal on an annual basis. So, we'll be exploring some of those options, but that will also tie into the conversation about whether we continue with CNG vehicles or not.
Yeah, if the council's okay, I would like to see some pros and cons to that and maybe start working our way away from those CNG vehicles.
Sure.
I have no problem with that, but that's not a decision we're making. On your Measure L, you're recovering the cost of, for personnel, is that after the maintenance of effort?
Yes.
Okay.
So, luckily with Measure L, our maintenance of effort is about a third of what it is for gas tax. So, we have been meeting our gas tax MOE for the past two years, therefore, we are meeting our Measure L.
Okay. And then, the storm drain system, MS4, is a unfunded mandate.
Correct.
Most of the city is in some type of a storm drain system.
I wouldn't say most.
Numbers-wise?
Yes.
Okay. We need to do a 218 as soon as we get overwhelming in a storm drain to get the entire city into a storm drain system, because that would spread load of the cost all the way across instead of putting a burden on the general fund.
That's correct. We've been trying to work on that, Kathleen and myself, for quite some time. I know there, you know, obviously, we're putting a little bit of the burden back on the homeowners, but that also helps to make sure that we mitigate some of what's occurring now, where we have such aging infrastructure that we're having to fund everything out of pocket as soon as something goes down. And unfortunately, it will continue to happen in the older sections of town because those pump stations are fairly old. Our staff does a wonderful job of trying to maintain them on an annual basis, but unfortunately, they're just aging.
And one quick one on the vehicle replacement. ARB has, CARB has some pretty good programs out there. For the motorcycle, if you don't mind having another electric one, boom, boom, it doesn't go as loud, but we'll talk to the new chief.
So, we do have three of those motorcycles. Unfortunately, their range isn't what we anticipated it to be, so the replacement that we have is a, you know, is gas motorcycle, but we currently have a gas motorcycle that we're just cycling out.
Okay, well, they do have programs. I get to listen to it all every month and forever. And the last thing is that if we do a tax sharing agreement, how fast can you convert for the next year?
Pretty quickly, probably.
Okay, because I'd like to see ERAF controlled and property tax controlled. Thank you. That's it. And this is a public hearing. It is a public hearing. I'll open it up for the public. Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I bring it back to the board, to the council for consideration.
Make a motion to approve item 5.1.
I'll second it.
We're motion to approve the second on item 5.1.
Council members, Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
LRA item 5.2, request for continuance, resolution approving the LRA fiscal year 2019, 2020 mid-year term amendments.
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting that this item be continued to the next council meeting date. As council's aware, we were fortunate enough to sign a couple of new, one very large new tenant and a couple of other tenants at the LRA very recently, and so, that has changed this picture of the budget a little, actually, a lot, and we need some time to be able to make some calculations and assumptions about what that will do to the operating budget moving forward, because as you know, it wasn't looking very pretty. And the picture is changing now that we have more tenants.
Very good.
So, we'd like to bring you a more complete picture.
Are there any comments on that from the council, from the board? All right. I open public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Seeing no public comment, I close public hearing. By roll call vote, is there a motion to continue?
I make a motion that we can continue.
I'll second it.
Authority members, Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.1, resolution approving the CDBG Stanislaus County, Urban County, and Home Consortium five-year consolidated plan project list.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. We are very excited to present this evening, this item this evening. This is, as you know, council approved the entrance into the consortium last year after Riverbank had sort of stayed out of the consortium for a very, very long time. And so, this is our first opportunity to make use of the benefits of being in that program, which are, which are some funds to do projects in certain areas of our community. So, Maricela has worked with myself and the rest of the department staff to come up with a project list of, of recommendations of how we think we can best use that money over the next couple fiscal years. This list can be changed. It's a yearly thing that we're going to be doing, but we want to talk through what we think is the best use of the funds for this coming fiscal year.
So, well, hello again, council and mayor. So, tonight, we do have for you this five-year project list that has been developed along with all of the other departments. So, as the city manager mentioned, back in May of 2019, we approved joining the urban county and the home consortium. What this does is it entitles us. So, that means on an annual basis, we will be receiving CDBG and home funds directly from the housing and urban development department. The funds are allocated based on a formula that's set by HUD, and it's a combination of population and income limits. When these projects are approved, they are submitted to HUD along with all of the projects within the consortium and the urban county, and then they calculate the amount that you will receive on an annual basis. So, the one drawback to the funds is that you can only use them in certain eligible areas of town. We can't use them citywide, so we are having to look for projects that fit within those eligible areas. And this is the map that we received from Stanislaus County of those eligible areas. As you'll note, the areas that are grayed out are where we have at least 51% or greater low to moderate income levels. And so, those are the areas that we focused on for the projects that we are presenting to you today for consideration. So, the urban county consortium develops a five-year consolidated plan and an annual action plan. So, the five-year consolidated plan sets out the plan for the next five years. The annual action plan looks at just one year. And so, every year, the annual action plan comes to the city council for review and for consideration of any new projects. The consolidated plan identifies our housing and community development needs within all of the jurisdictions that belong to the urban county. The urban county is our consortium for CDBG funds, and then we have the home consortium as well. So, we take both into consideration during the preparation of the consolidation plan. CDBG has typically been used for infrastructure, whereas home funds are allocated towards affordable housing. And so, here is the project list that we're presenting to council tonight. This is the CDBG project list, and so, some of the projects that we're looking at for the upcoming fiscal year is a redesign of and rehab of our Castleburg Park Trail. So, Castleburg Park does fall within that eligible area. Because it's in an area that does not have a landscape and lighting fee associated with it, then it has made it difficult for us to make the necessary improvements that need to be made to the park. And so, we are allocating approximately $110,000 towards that project. We're also looking at some ADA improvements to be done, as well as ADA improvements in Pioneer Park. Pioneer Park is right next door to our Skelts Hall. For fiscal year '21 and '22 through '22, '23, so we're looking to combine two years' worth of funds for our next project, which is a waterline installation. This is going to be in the alleyway from Riverside, from the Corporation Yard to Fort Street. In '23, '24, we're also looking at some additional waterline installation on Topeka, and then some additional ADA upgrades at Castleburg and at Pioneer. And for that final year, we're looking at yet another waterline installation and any additional Castleburg or Pioneer Park ADA improvements. Now, it could be that those ADA improvements could be done all in year one, depending on the funding that we receive, and that will allow us to be able to use any additional funds towards those waterline improvements, which we anticipate will come over this budgeted amount, since these amounts were set in 2015. Our home project list, you'll notice everyone says the exact same thing. There's a reason for that. Home wants you to be as broad as possible to allow the city to be able to do a variety of affordable housing projects. And so, this wording was given to us by the home consortium to make sure that we capture as many affordable housing opportunities as possible. So, we're looking at affordable housing, which is very general, looking at acquisition with rehab. That's a program that has been very popular in the city of Turlock. They actually acquire a property, they rehab it, and they either turn it around and give it to a nonprofit to be able to rent out or sell, or the city can also use that property for a first-time home buyer, which then uses up the funds that we continue to have in our own programs. So, it's been really successful with them. We hope to be able to team up with Turlock to be able to do that as well here in Riverbank, unless another affordable housing opportunity comes up where we could turn that over to a nonprofit. And we're also looking at just rehabilitation, mortgage assistance if that program continues to thrive, and then administration. And so, the cost estimates are just estimates. The, as I mentioned, HUD will take all of these projects, and based on our income levels through these eligible project areas and our population, they will calculate the actual amounts that we receive on an annual basis. And so, that is the list that we are presenting to the city council for feedback and consideration tonight for adoption. This is going to be your first opportunity to review Riverbank's list. At an upcoming meeting, we'll be presenting the consolidated plan for all of the county to the city council for review and comments, and then we'll come back a third time for a final blessing of that plan before it gets sent off to HUD. So, if you have any comments or questions, I'm available.
Comments, questions?
So, for the Castleburg Park, the trail, it's sorely needed. I walked it yesterday, and I sent over a bunch of pictures to the city manager, so I hope we can share those at the next, at the next meeting. On the west side of the park, there is no ADA accessibility. I know on the, on the sheet there, it only says Kentucky and eight, but if we can add the eight, the west side of the park there as well, there's, that's a lot of the residents parked there when they're, when they're playing soccer and they access it from that side. So, if we can add that to the list, that'd be great.
Yes, so, we give a general location just to look at the environmental, but it encompasses all, any area surrounding Castleburg.
Perfect.
I just want to say that I'm glad that we joined the consortium because it's really going to help us with our projects. Glad to see there's, there will be consistent funding.
I just want to thank Maricela for all the hard work she does in putting these things together.
And thank you to all the departments for their input.
Just a couple of comments. First, with Self-Help Enterprises, Sean, are they involved in any of our rehab? Can we capitalize on their funding and combine it with ours?
Self-Help has been involved in a variety of consortium-related projects in a number, Turlock, Patterson, and what we really like about, not the CDBG side, but the home side, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I always, Maricela always corrects me on which the more restrictive one is, but this is the less restrictive one, right, Maricela? More restrictive?
More restrictive, yeah.
This is more restrictive, okay. I never could quite get it right. But in any event, Self-Help would be the kind of affordable housing provider that you would, like, for example, we discussed a couple meetings ago, this concept of purchasing a rundown triplex or duplex, rehabbing it and turning it over to a provider that would run it as an affordable project, whatever form that takes. And so, this gives us another avenue of funding since we haven't been successful thus far in actual grant funding.
And the benefit of working with a Self-Help is that they know the business, basically, so they understand those limitations that we may have, and they make sure to work within those.
And the second comment is on our housing authority. Have we started looking at dissolving that under the Stanislaus Housing Authority?
They hadn't had that meeting, this was now a couple months ago, with the board that is our local folks, explaining that, that at a federal level, they were trying to eliminate all these smaller housing agencies, and I haven't got a report back from Barbara about whether they've ever voted to do so or not, but I will follow up and forward it around.
Yeah, because I will be at HUD with the chief of staff, and I want to make sure that I have all the information when we're talking about affordable housing, homeless, because he's the homeless czar of the nation.
We'll add that into your one pager.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this? Maricela, seeing no, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion we approve item 6.1 as stated.
I second.
We have a motion to approve the second on item 6.1.
Council members, Barbara Martinez?
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, authorizing a new event and use of city facilities, health fair spring 2020.
Thank you, mayor. And I know the council loves my personalized PowerPoints. I do not have them for the next two items because they're very short. But as council knows, one of the strategic plan objectives has come up a number of times over the past couple cycles, has been ways to implement strategies to promote a healthy community. And we've done a number of things over the years towards that objective. More recently, Vice Mayor Uribe and I were talking about the possibility of some sort of very small installer health fair that would promote physical activity, provide services to the community, maybe for those folks who maybe don't have access to said services. We think it kind of aligns with a number of the other programs we've been doing locally here, like a number of the programs that Sue has in her Recreation Department, the Bike and Ped Plan that Kathleen's department is working on. And in fact, in the past, the city of Riverbank held a regular health fair that was coordinated alongside the farmer's market. And then as the farmer's market sort of slowly kind of died away, the health fair kind of went with it, is my understanding. But Norma used to actually work on that years ago. So the question wasn't, how can we recreate the same thing we've done in the past? The question was, what would make sense today? So we actually met with Golden Valley Health Centers, who have some experience doing this kind of work, and said, what do we need to do to have something be successful? And their advice to us was basically really simple: keep it small, keep it simple, and keep it service-based. Don't add in a bunch of vendors that have nothing, you know, Petco doesn't need to be there. And, you know, we love Petco, but it's not, you know, related to health. So Gabby in my office and I called around to a number of different local folks and other healthcare companies and providers, and asked, sort of, mind whether or not they'd be interested. And a number of them said, yes, we'd be very interested in providing. We've had, we've made contact with a couple of dentists that will be there to provide free cleanings and checks, a couple of different physicians or organizations like Golden Valley that will provide blood pressure checks and general health checkups. We're working on a vision or optometrist, and then we're going to work in some sort of light services that might help with our homeless community. We're going to have Behavioral Health and Recovery Services present, as well as a community services agency, as well as going to provide some folks that will provide services for people if they're interested. And then, other than that, that's pretty much it. Maybe 10 to 12 vendors. We're looking at April 18th from 10 to 2, short directed services. We'll do, we'll have kind of a small marketing budget that we get a bunch of information out, and sort of test to see how successful it is this year, and report back to council if we think that it's worth our time and effort. There is very little fiscal impact. I'm working with Sue to have a part-timer present the day of the event, just to kind of coordinate if there's any needs of the vendors. And then, pretty much, it'll be me and my staff that, you know, have already done the pre-work on it. So we'd like council's approval to test this model this year, and then report back if it works, and/or any changes for following years.
I'd recommend if you have any costs that comes out of your public benefit fund.
Okay.
Comments, recommendations?
I've got a question. At the health fair, are you going to have some blood collecting, blood donation?
We haven't had that specifically, but it actually was brought up to me yesterday that that would be a convenient one if there's a vendor. And I think Golden Valley actually does that as well, so.
And another question I'm going to ask you, are you going to have anything about cannabis?
We hadn't planned to, no.
We do have a medical cannabis dispensary in this town.
How's council feel about that? I want to hear, since it's on the issue. Okay.
The medical, I've looked at myself.
Got to cover it all.
Okay. Because I suspect one of our local businesses would be more than willing to have a booth out there, educational only, okay.
Okay. Any public comment? Saying none, I bring it back for consideration.
I put a motion forward that we authorize the health fair.
I'll second it.
With the addition of the medical cannabis. We have a motion to approve and a second on item 6.2.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
6.3, authorization of a Riverbank summer homeless count.
Thank you, mayor. As council's aware, each year, Housing and Urban Development mandates the point-in-time count be conducted in January to attain a snapshot of the number of unsheltered homeless in our community. We participated this past January, and the, as I think we've talked about pretty openly here, the HUD mandated pit count has a very stringent set of rules that you have to follow, a very specific timeline you have to be at. One of the frustrations from a lot of the volunteers is that you only get this specific amount of time to count the homeless, and then once that timeframe's over, the door shuts. And so I've had, Norma and I have had people bring us forms that they kept and had someone fill out the day after or the day after that, that we didn't happen to catch on the day of the count, and it's too late. We can't, per the federal guidelines, they don't count. So actually, Norma and I were discussing, over the last year or two, that workflow permitting, it would be a really wonderful idea to get out and do one of our own counts during the summer, where we're not inhibited by those rules. We don't have to limit it to one day. We can do it over the course of a couple of days. We can more closely team up with our local nonprofits, like, for example, Linda Silva with Christian Food Sharing, the folks over at the Catholic Church's food sharing program. These people work with and know the homeless populations in Riverbank on a weekly, daily basis. They are the experts. And so our idea is to team up with them in a manner that's convenient for their operation, and try to piggyback on their efforts to get a better, more accurate count. We have even discussed taking it a step further, and having not only some, hopefully gathering some data on our chronic homeless, but also hopefully gathering some data on our homeless that we talk a lot about at these meetings, our folks that are maybe doubling up in homes, that are sleeping on couches and cars and hotels, that meet the definition of homeless but do not fall into what you would be able to fill out a form and have it counted. Because I think that one of the problems that we've had conceiving of how we want to serve our population here, is we really don't have very good data, you know, from this pit process. It doesn't give us any information that really is useful in how we can best serve them. And so the kinds of questions that we may ask are things like, what is, in your opinion, what kinds of services could Riverbank try to put forward that would actually be useful to you, a person that's living in this situation? We just think it'd be more useful all around. Now, it may not mean that it puts us up in high categories for grant competition, but that's not really the goal. The goal is to really get a realistic view of what our homelessness situation here is in Riverbank. So that's the concept. We didn't state a date here. Internally, we've kind of discussed in the June-July timeframe, because that's when we anecdotally notice the most folks that are homeless outside. And so I think what we do is we work with our nonprofits, most of whom we've connected at the mayor's homelessness nonprofit meeting, to really have a discussion with them about what they think the best days are. And then the idea would be, we package all of that together, once we complete that, and report back to council with our findings. The other thing we're going to do to add in, is that instead of just going around and giving people little care packages, which is very nice, we also are going to package together information on services that are currently available that folks could get. A lot of people just don't know. They don't know that their housing vouchers are available. For example, I was at a homelessness meeting the other day, and the Veterans Administration said that they have 15 housing vouchers for homeless veterans currently available right now, that someone could walk in and get an apartment. So we want to package that information together in a simple format that we can hand out to folks and help them. So anyway, it's our idea of how to more directly connect with this issue, and we'd like authorization to move forward with it this summer.
When you're doing your planning, excuse me, I'd like to talk to the schools, all three high schools, the Crossroads Elementary and all the other schools on the homeless children. And then we can move that and try getting the number of families that we have. Because a lot of those homeless are sleeping in garages or sleeping on couches. So that would be one good one. You have county services out here near the high school, get them involved. There's a lot of others in this area that we could contact and move forward with it. It's a good idea. It'd also give a more accurate reflection of our situation and who we're targeting, because I would prefer we move forward as rapidly as possible to get those families off of their couches and into their own places.
Yep. I think the other component I didn't mention is, I don't know this to be 100% accurate, but I'm not aware of any other communities in the county recently, at least that are doing midpoint-of-the-year counts. I think Medesta might have done one a couple years ago. It is done other places. I did a bunch of research. One of the things that's very frustrating from my seat, when we've been, tried to compete for some of these funds to do something for the community here, is that because our pit numbers have been traditionally very low compared to a Patterson or an Oakdale of similar size, it seems as though our problem isn't taken as seriously in some respects as others. When, you know, look, to me, five homeless people is too many. One is too many, and so we need to be providing some sort of assistance. So hopefully this helps us.
I think the better the data we have, the better decisions we can make, so I'm totally on board with this.
I agree.
All right. Any public comment on this? Saying no public comment, I bring it back for consideration.
Make a motion that we approve item 6.3.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 6.3.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
7-1, staff comments.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple comments. We're going to be having a health fair on April 18th, and so, I'm just kidding. There's actually a lot going on in April. So aside from the health fair, on April 25th, Love River Bank is occurring, but there's two other things happening that day. Just today, we found out the county is going to be requesting the use of our plaza across the street here to do a drop the drugs event, which, where people can drop off prescription medications, sharps too, right, chief? So needles, and this doesn't necessarily just need, my understanding is, not just diabetic tools, any needles that you don't want to use anymore, you can, you'll be able to get rid of them that day. April 25th, it'll be from 10 to 2, right here across the way in the plaza. And so it's a really great opportunity, because I, one of the things we hear a lot here is it's very difficult, especially for elderly people, to know where to get rid of all these prescription meds they don't need anymore, you know? And please don't flush them, because that's not good for our water system.
Health fair is the 18th.
Health fair is the 18th. And then the other thing that's occurring on the 25th, other than those Love River Bank and the Drop the Drugs, is the e-waste collection is occurring that day. And that will be at the corp yard, where you could take old electronics that, and I believe Jilton is the one that's, it's one of our contractual things they do for us on a yearly basis. I'll look into that. Yeah. There's a lot going on for 25. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. No other staff comments? You guys can tell on this guy. Council member Fossey, please.
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
Council member Campbell.
Just a couple things. One, the curb down on 108 by the Catholic Church, I've been by there several times around 8 o'clock in the morning in the past few weeks, and it seems I see a lot of cars speeding around it. And I'd like to remind people that the Catholic Church has things going on with the people coming at times to get food, kids going to catechism, they have an 8 o'clock mass every morning. So I'd remind them to remember the 25 mile an hour, just for safety. And there will be improvements to that, hopefully, down the road soon. They're in the process. The other thing is, the winter water rates, I think, are still in effect, winter time schedule, and I'm seeing an awful lot of people watering in the afternoon, as it's gotten sunnier or on the wrong day. So just remember that those are still in effect, the rules, until a little while later. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Barbara Martinez.
Just one comment, that the Riverbank softball parade and the first game of the season will be March 14th at Castleburg Park. I will be there, so I hope to see you there, too. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
The California Rural Legal Assistance in partnership with Casa del Rio will be holding a 2020 census presentation February 28th at California Avenue Elementary in the cafeteria from 8:30 a.m., and a second presentation on March 12th at Riverbank Language Academy in the cafeteria as well at 5:00 p.m. Both will be in English and Spanish. For contact info, contact Casa del Rio. Don't forget, census day is April 1st. Also, Riverbank Language Academy will be holding a fundraiser for student field trips at the Community Center on February 29th, this Saturday, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Adults only, and tickets are $25. And don't forget, election day is, for the primaries, March 3rd. Get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you all. Tomorrow, I'll be up in Sacramento, meeting with the governor's office on transportation and trying to convince them to help expedite the faucet. But I believe that's going to be delayed until we meet with them. What day is that? The 3rd of March?
Yeah. Next Wednesday, I think.
Yeah, that's good. In March, end of April, I'll be in DC with Stan Cog doing transportation, and I have an appointment with the chief of staff for HUD, and I'll be talking our specific housing shortages and what we need for affordable housing and homeless. And at the same time, I'll go to EPA Water with Michael's plan and see if we can get funding. So with that, we move into closed session, consisting of item 8.1, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property 062-031-005 through 007, agency negotiator Sean Scully, city manager, property negotiator Ametis Inc. under negotiations, price, terms of payment, or both. Item 8.2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo, Government Code 54956.9, one potential case. And then item 8.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District versus the City of Riverbank and DOES 1-20. Stanislaus County Superior Court Case Number Charlie Victor 19004402. At this time, anyone from the public may comment on any of these items. You have a maximum of five minutes. Is there anyone from the public? That this meeting is in recess for a closed session. That this meeting is in recess for a closed session.
The regular city council and L R A board meetings are now back in session. Item nine point one, report from closed session on item eight point one. Conference with real property negotiations. Ametis Inc. Direction has been provided to staff. Item nine point two, report from closed session on item eight point two. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. One potential case. Direction has been provided to staff. Item nine point three, report from closed session on item eight point three. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District versus the City of Riverbank and D O E S one dash twenty. Direction has been provided to staff. Our next regular council meeting is March tenth at six P M. We're now adjourned.